Snow is finally starting to melt a bit. If you would get everybody to stand, first off, we're going to do the Pledge Allegiance, and then we're going to have a prayer by Jack Hooker, pastor of Westfield Bible Methods Church.
The Pledge Allegiance to the lives of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Looks like he's not here. Patrick Tam, would you like to have somebody from the council say a prayer?
Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight and to do the city's business. May you give us the wisdom and guidance to do what's right for the community as we go throughout our week, let us watch over those citizens in our neighborhood and the officers and police officers that look over them as well. In your name, amen.
President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Marla, may we note the presence of a quorum.
You bet. Joe Deppner.
Here.
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff.
Here.
Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Waniger.
Here.
John Dart.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes as our next item on the agenda this evening, assuming that everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting, and we need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve the minutes from January 13th. Second.
We have motion made by Councilor McCarty, excuse me, motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Seeing no discussion, may we call the roll.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the claim docket, assuming everyone's had the opportunity to review that. We need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve the claims as submitted. Second.
We have motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor Dart. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Tonight, we do want to just, for the public's knowledge, petition to vacate the public right-of-way, 2477. Residents were notified of this potential petition. The landowner has formally decided to withdraw, so we just wanted to let residents know that petition 2477, which was a vacation of the public right-of-way, has been withdrawn by the landowner for residents that may or may not have been impacted for that. Director Todd, do we have any citizens that wish to address the council this evening? Great, thank you. Our next item, a special business, Mayor, do you want to switch this up for special recognition first? I think this is absolutely fantastic that we both had Mayor Willis and our police, excuse me, fire chief, I almost stumbled there, I probably will get killed for that, but Chief Gaylor is here tonight for a great recognition.
Quickly, we're gathered here tonight to recognize a few folks that live here in our community for doing something that we feel is really exceptional. Talk a little bit about a story that is thrilling, is bravery and quick thinking and some actions that took place on a day a couple of weeks ago now, when we had an individual that was in his backyard trying to plan around, or whatever the case was, anyway, had a dog run out on the pond, he was trying to rescue his dog, fell through the ice. And at that point, I think it was Felix that heard some noise, and Common got his dad and recognized that this was a pretty serious situation. And so through some quick thinking and some actions, Mr. Fisher got some ropes and some things in place and actually affected a rescue in a situation that could have really had some dire consequences. So through some quick thinking, David was actually able to pull the victim of the dog from the freezing waters. Mr. Fisher has an extensive background in ropes, utilizing some methods to keep himself and other bystanders off the ice to make sure that he was safe in doing so. Thanks to their courage, what could have been a tragic accident ended in a successful rescue. This act reminds us that sometimes heroes don't always wear capes. They're everyday people. You step up when it counts. Let us remember that in moments of crisis, bravery and quick thinking can make all the difference in the world. Today, we celebrate those who took the time to step up, showing the power of selflessness and a true meaning of heroism and taking care of somebody that they didn't even know. So at this point, I would like to ask the mayor if he's got a couple of comments that he would like to recognize.
So those of you in the back row, the public safety personnel, you're wired for this, right? And every day you wake up, you have that mentality of you're going to serve your community and you're going to put your life out on the line for our residents. But if you're a resident living in the community, you probably don't wake up thinking those things. And I can tell you, going out on ice is a very scary thing. If you've ever done that, it's not fun, especially when you know that two people have already fallen in and we're in a situation where, I should say, a dog and a human fell in and we're in a situation of somebody potentially passing. So the fact that you two, what we call in the military, you ran to the sound of the gun, most people aren't wired this way, so please don't take this for granted. Your bravery, we certainly appreciate it. And I thought it was worthy, we need to have an award in our city recognizing people who put themselves out there like that. So you will be our first two recipients of this award and hopefully our last two in many ways, but hopefully there are more people like you in our community that are going to put themselves out there. It's really good.
On behalf of the city council, we'd like to just echo our sentiments of thanks and really truly amazing what you did in a time that you probably never thought would ever happen, but thank you very much in doing so. Our next item of business is our comprehensive plan update, long-range planning. I think Caleb and then also Cynthia Bowen with Rundell Ernstberger and Associates have a presentation this evening. Caleb?
Thank you, President. So you've heard from me before, so I'll be brief here. I'm here to introduce Cynthia Bowen. She is the project lead with us with Rundell Ernstberger Associates, also known as REA. She's going to present to you a little bit tonight about what a comprehensive plan is, the significance of it, how they typically operate, and then she's going to go over the process, where we're at, update you where we're at in the process right now for Westfield. Then she's going to go over some key findings, some takeaways from the baseline analysis, the existing conditions and needs. So without further ado, introduce Cynthia Bowen.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't at least say, you know, REA is a nationally recognized firm, they're one of the big ones in the industry, but you are a Westfield resident. So we're super excited to have a local person taking the lead here in our community, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, good evening, council. Thank you for having me here tonight, very much appreciate it. As Caleb said, my name is Cynthia Bowen, I'm a partner at Rundell Ernstberger and Associates, and we're happy to be here tonight. So I want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the key findings of our current conditions and needs analysis. But first, let me start off on what is a comprehensive plan? You know, well, first off, it is a document, a guiding document, that helps you understand and tells you how to grow over a 20-year period. It tells you the type, location, and quality of future development. It is that long range vision that guides elected and appointed officials, so you as the council, the plan commission. It guides the staff in future decision-making regarding infrastructure improvements, regarding development petitions, and how resources need to be invested. It contains goals and objectives. It is the legal basis for your ordinances here in the community, and it really needs to have a strong implementation component, so you know who your partners are to help you implement that. And so you know the timing of when those resources need to be expended. So, you know, the question becomes, why plan? All development is planned, but the big question is, who is doing the planning? So if you think back, industries were built by rivers for access and electricity. You had county seats were created so that anyone anywhere in the county could get to them easily. You had developers who converted farmland to housing and retail and employment areas, and developers are driven by costs and they're driven by profit. You have homeowners who split off their parcels, maybe for their children to live next to them. But in all those scenarios, they are the ones doing the planning. But it really should be the elected and appointed officials who are driving that process, planning for that community, planning for how those resources are going to be used efficiently and effectively. So we have a seven-phased process over an 18-month period. We started back in September of 2024. So right now, we're working in the baseline assessment and the capacity building. So we are looking at the data, understanding what it says, figuring out what some of the issues are. We are identifying our steering committee and our focus group so we can get to that qualitative data that the numbers can't tell us. We will then have community planning week during the values and vision stage, which is where we really spend a concentrated effort with the community, understanding and identifying issues and opportunities, so that we can really know what needs to be the direction of the plan through that draft plan. We then begin to develop all those frameworks, economic development, transportation, future land use, housing, the quality of life amenities that has made Westfield so great. So we really begin to develop those plans for the next 20 years and where Westfield needs to go. Then we will develop a final plan. Now, all through this process, we will have public engagement, in-person, online, at different types of things like the farmer's market. As a matter of fact, our first public engagement is going to be on February 8th at the Winter's Farmer's Market. So looking forward to beginning to meet people and getting their input. But eventually, we'll go through the adoption process in November of 2025 through January of 2026, and then we will deliver our final deliverables after that process has been finalized. So let's talk a little bit about some of the key indicators that we're seeing. You know, first off, let's talk about population growth. So you see the bars there that show your actual numbers for how you're growing, and then the orange line is the growth rate from previous decades. So from 1990 to 2000, the population has doubled. And so you can see from your growth rate, you have continued to grow continuously and at staggering amounts, so much so that Westfield's growth rate is outpacing its neighbors. When we look at population per square mile, what we're looking at is the more people per square mile means more efficiency in services and more revenue per square mile. So while some of your neighbor's land area has not shifted, its population has grown. And so what that means is they're building upward instead of building outward. And so Westfield land area has grown more while its population has grown, so we have spread out more. So Westfield has fewer population per square mile in our area as compared to our neighbors. When you look at our median age in Westfield, Washington Township, is the red line up there. You see that we are still a young community, but our age is increasing faster than our neighbors, our region, or the state. But we are still growing, we are still young, and that is an advantage for us. This is our population pyramid, and there's a couple of things that I want you to take away from. When you look at the bottom there, you really see, when you look at the overall population pyramid, we are a community of families. You see at the bottom, we have a great base of young children in the community. You see from 45 to 34-years-old, we have a great working class in the community. But if you also go up to that 65 to 74-year-olds, we have a lot of retirement people in the community, and that's because people are moving into our community to be closer to those grandchildren that we have here in our community. So we have seen some growth as well in that young professional segment, that 20 to 24-year-olds, but it has not been as much growth as we've seen in the other sectors. And so we want to see more growth there. So when we look at the age characteristics, you see that the growth of persons 18-years and younger is continuing up. That's the gray chart that you see over there. But you see that the rate of growth has slowed slightly as, from year to year, as we get more younger children. We want to make sure that we continue to focus on attracting young families as part of our growth strategy over the next 20 years. As you see in the population chart, 65-years and older, you see from 2010 to 2022, that population range has almost tripled. And again, that goes back to the fact that there are housing options here in the community for those folks, those seniors, to move here, to be closer to their families and their So this chart shows you the number of units and building. So if you look at that first part, so the 79 to 5, so the blue and the yellow, those combined make almost 85%. That means that 85% of the community is single-family or townhomes. That is what our community is made up of. In the middle, you see 13%. That is what we call missing middle housing. So that is duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage courts, five-to-eight apartment buildings, so five-to-eight units, very small apartment buildings. Only 13% of our community is made up of that. And then you see 2% up there in the red and the purple. Those are apartment buildings. Only 2% of the housing stock is made up of apartment buildings. The other 2% are mobile homes, and then we don't have any boats, RVs, or vans that people are living in. So when we look at the age of housing units, now let me just classify, this is a snapshot in time for 2023. But we have more new construction housing units than the Indy Metro. We are in the blue, you have Hamilton County in the orange, and you have the Indianapolis Metro area in the green. So 65% of our housing units have been built in the last 25 years, and only 7.1% is more than 50-years old. What that means is, is that our housing stock is more modern, it is going to be of a size, have the number of bedrooms and bathrooms and modern kitchen that people are looking for when they're looking for a new house, which is, again, explains why we have such a high growth rate, because people are able to find what they're looking for in the market. And our last slide here in terms of home values. So this is the price-ask for homes. Now you'll see I have a green arrow there, and what that shows is the average sales price. So our average sales price in 2024 was $463,000. Our median home value in 2023 was only $365,700. So the asking price for houses is $100,000 more than what the median home value was. 90% of owner-occupied homes have a value over $200,000. So what this means is that the young professionals, if you remember that group that I said that's not growing as fast, those folks are looking for homes and wanting to enter the market here, but they can't find the homes. We don't have the apartments or the single units within their cost range for them to move into here. We have the walkability, the things that we're doing downtown in Grand Junction, we have the amenities that they're looking for, but there's just not the housing or the price point for them to move into our community. So our median gross rent had increased in 2010, it was $822 a month, it is now up to $1,431 per month. And then more than 60% of households spend more than 30% of their gross income on housing. So I don't know if you remember your parents telling you when you first bought your house, you don't want to spend more than 30% of your gross income on housing. Well, we have 60% of our residents who are of owner-occupied, who are spending more than 30%, which is a significant amount. We have 1/3 of our renters who are cost burden, but that has declined from 2010, which is good. So those are some of the key trends that we're seeing in population and housing right now. So I'll leave it there and answer any questions that you might have. Of course, as we continue on throughout the process, we'll have more information regarding employment and workforce statistics and commuting, but if you have any questions about this, I'm happy to answer any of those.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Any questions this evening? Councilor Dart?
Go ahead.
Mine's quick. The pie chart that you had up there, 79% in blue, is that through 2024? It is through 2023. 2023, okay. That's probably changed significantly, I would think, with all the construction.
Is that?
It's not changed significantly. I wouldn't use the word significantly.
Is that built or approved? I assume that those are built.
Those are built.
Thank you.
Regarding the different house types that you had listed or showed up there, are you guys doing a statistical analysis in regards to the cost of what each of those different classes of housing types brings to a community in regards to public safety, fire, police, school corporations, and those types of things? Are you going to present that information as well?
So you're asking if we're going to, the cost of the impact. So we, yes, we are looking at the impact of not only housing, but also non-residential uses on services and things like that.
Okay.
Yes.
So the rents, you know, the average rent, I think you said was $1,400. That's not unique to Westfield. I mean, that's pretty common in any major metro market. So, and every municipality talks about affordable housing. How does your organization define affordable housing? Because, yeah, I guess, let me just leave it there. How do you define affordable housing? Because everybody's got a different definition. Nobody can truly determine what affordable housing is. Is it multifamily? Is it single-family? Is it first-step-up? Is it condos? I mean, how do you, how do you, how do you address this issue and still build a community the way you want to build it?
So we define it as attainable housing, because affordable housing in the realm of HUD means something completely different. And then what we do is we look at the different types of housing and what is missing in the community, and seeing if there's a way that we can provide more balance across a variety of price points. So, you know, is there a way that, you know, we can provide townhomes or smaller apartment styles or cottage courts that may be smaller lots? Because sometimes you can have a smaller lot with a smaller house and still have a high-quality product, but it costs less and be able to decrease the price of entry for folks into the market. So we will be looking at that as we kind of move through this process of what is the right mix for Westfield? What are the right housing product types? What are the right densities? Because of course, the more, the more housing, the more density you have, the more units you have, then the, it's not, it's more cost-effective on services, on, for developers, it makes it easier to pencil, it brings the rent prices down, so it's more affordable, more attainable for young professionals, things like that, to enter the market.
Where do you see the, based on your initial analysis, where do you see the biggest gap for housing, what type of housing?
I don't know that I can answer you fully tonight on that.
Okay, it's fine.
But we can certainly get back with you on an answer with that.
Thank you.
I got one question. I know the answer, but I think it's important to put this in the public because I'm hearing it, I'm sure the council is as well. You've got the comprehensive plan going on, we're obviously planning for areas we don't currently have a vision for. Should we stop approving housing until after this process is completed? Or give us your thoughts in that regard.
No, you should not stop planning, and you should not stop development. This happens in every community. Planning is a natural cycle of what you go through, but you should never stop doing what you're doing. You should never stop development, because the, what could happen is you could end up stalling your economy, you can end up stalling the housing market and have more dire consequences because of that. It's more, it's easier for you to continue to plan, continue to work with developers to get the product and the design and what you want as we're continuing to go through the process. And so that's what I would suggest.
Any other questions? Okay, I have several. The, I try to be polite every once in a while. The age, can we go back to the age slide?
Yes, we can.
So Zionsville's got an interesting slope as well, if I'm not colorblind. The, what do you attribute some of that age, aging, if you will, that's occurring at this time?
So I would say that they've had a long history of people living in their community. They are an older community, and so...
So roughly, what's their housing starts per year?
I don't, I don't know.
Is it significantly less in Westfield? I mean, the answer is yes.
Yes, it is. They are, yes.
Their home values are escalating as well in Zionsville. Our home values are escalating in Westfield. Carmel recently, are you familiar with Carmel's recent study that they conducted on their affordability questions, attainable, what have you?
Uh-uh.
So 44% of the residents cannot obtain, not obtain the house that they currently live in.
Right.
Do you see that occurring in some of your markets that you do work in?
Yes.
So if we stall out growth, if you can go to the slide with under 18 slides, so our population is actually, well, our population age characteristics of under 18 is actually increasing, the rate of growth is declining.
Mm-hmm.
Are you seeing that in other Hamlin County areas?
No.
Well, I would ask you to look at the school populations of both Carmel, Fishers, and HSE. I think you may actually be enlightened on, there's a pattern here in Hamlin County that frankly, right now, that some of the schools, it may not be significant, but their actual rate of growth is slowly declining. I'm an old sociology person that really loves this stuff. So the population of 65-years and older, is that, are you also going to look at cash purchases for houses? And what age groups are doing those cash? at cash purchases for houses and what age groups are doing those cash purchases? Because frankly, if you're a first-time home buyer, you're getting outclassed right away with cash offers.
Yes, yes.
And that's a phenomenon that's been occurring probably for close to ten years in Hamlin County specifically, Fishers, Carmel, Westfield as well. So with our school growth that continues, if we, what type of housing, because we're also seeing some unique housing price points where they have three or four kids, which typically most communities don't see.
Right.
On the million-dollar-plus homes and the oldest child of four school ages, third grade. But that doesn't make up these types of growth numbers. So we see some of that, but that's also not going to be driving. I mean, would that be accurate? I mean, usually that would be the general rule of thumb.
So what's interesting in Westfield is that you guys have had a high number of persons per household and then it dipped a little bit, but you still run higher than most other communities. So.
At one time, I think we were known for the second highest per capita for school-age children, households.
Mm-hmm.
Like that was one of our data points a couple of years ago. So when we're faced with this type of challenge, because it is a challenge of how we plan our community and so forth, what, I mean, we have rents now, right now, that are going from about two dollars per square foot, and I've seen recent studies, they're two dollars and forty-four cents. That would blow out frankly, your number that you currently have on the screen, that eight-hundred-square-foot apartment would be substantially higher than, than what you're showing right now.
So we are calling around right now to ask for the actual rents.
So the banks frankly, right now, are showing developers some pretty interesting potential rents. So if you, if you look at that, and that's what the banks are expecting, a potential, not, not the gentleman that's in front of us tonight, we'll talk about that later, but, but at the same time, you have unbelievable rent, rents that banks are also expecting for their financing of certain developments.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the other piece that we're also trying to balance.
Right.
And that is, townhomes, frankly, price points for townhomes can be all over the place. What type of demand, what age group, do you see any patterns with your other work of what type of age groups? I think it varies, but is there anything that you see consistently from a pattern or any development per se?
No, there hasn't been anything that has stuck out or has shown a trend that it's one age group or over another.
So we have some townhome developments that have become full-time, short-term rentals. So that frankly, prices drives market rates up significantly higher and it totally changes the dynamic of the respective neighborhoods. We also have, and these price points too, are seven fifty on townhomes in some cases. We also have full-on townhome neighborhoods that had contracts, which then a REIT comes in and have purchased out all those townhomes for future development. So we do have a phenomenon called Grand Park, which you're more than familiar with, which is the beauty of having you doing this work. The, because with Grand Park, the short, AirDNA, which is what compares Airbnb rates throughout the entire country and frankly, internationally, rates, central Indiana is one of the best investor markets for Airbnbs specifically.
Yes.
Grand Park's part of that piece. So if we continue to allow townhomes to be bought up by short-term rentals, because frankly, they're, it's, it's a great business. I mean, to be frank, it's, capitalism's great. But if we continue to do that, that continues to drive up resale values because they become investment opportunities. So do you take a look at that as well on your comprehensive plan, planning piece of how we handle that type of phenomenon that, I mean, we're, we're, we're a prime market for this.
We do. What we have been seeing in other communities though, is not the townhomes being bought up, it's been the single-family homes being bought up for rental communities.
So our firefighters in the back, one of the first things they've shared with me, which I continue to talk about even at the state level, having the ability for a short-term rental registry, when our, particularly our police and firefighters roll up to a three-bedroom, four-bedroom house, they respond appropriately and they respond properly, but suddenly when you're faced with fifteen, eighteen kids and, and a couple of adults, that apparatus response is different. So well, that, that's something that I'd love to also potentially look at in the, in the future as well. Our firefighters are exemplary and frankly, they want to respond appropriately and having that type of knowledge for the community, I think is important. Knock on wood, we have frankly, a gentleman that trains most EMS works for us. And so we have great personnel, but trying to make sure that's done right is also going to be something that I would be very interested in as well.
Patrick, while you're on that topic, yeah, I'd like to see some stats on what other communities are doing regarding the, these investment groups coming in and purchasing single-family homes, because there's a lot of discussion, Fishers is addressing that as we speak, and cities and towns are considering limiting the number of households within a neighborhood or a community that can be rented short-term. And it'd be great to have that information because with Grand Park is, is a great asset in the city. It's only going to continue to burden our city, I think, long-term. And I think that needs to be part of our strategic plan.
Okay.
And some of these questions though, too, are really just things I would like to take a look at, to be frank. The challenge is that our cost of land is so significant and that's not unique to our, our colleagues, if you will, in Hamlin County. But, you know, Fishers does one thing, the market will react and investment dollars will go elsewhere, which could be Westfield frankly, as well. So we have to also pay attention to what our neighbors are doing, including when they try to steal our tax dollars, but the mayor's been on that. But, but that's the piece that, those are some of the things that we're looking at. We're excited to be working with Caleb and the whole team from the planning department and your, and particularly your firm. I think it's fantastic that you live here and obviously, it's a little bit more, I'm sure every client's meaningful, but I'm sure this one's even more so for you, which I appreciate.
It is very much so.
So we look forward to that as well. Sorry for, I, I love this type of stuff, so.
Your eyes are lighting up.
It's, it's, it's very important though, because what we decide here, because these type of trends can choke our school.
Yes.
Okay, they can choke our schools because we're over, we could potentially be overbilled. Carmel and Fishers, if you go to Muncie and Delaware County and so forth, Delta High School's been taking students from anywhere. So, so is Yorktown. So other schools are looking at those types of opportunities because they can via state law.
Yes.
So if all of a sudden other schools start making those changes and, you know, frankly, transportation's transportation, if they can get there, markets change.
Yes.
So, but those are the pieces, affordability, obtainability, it is, it's a mess because of cost of land.
And it's something that, so I was with Mayor Fadness, actually this afternoon, speaking of stealing tax dollars, right?
I'm well aware.
Discussing that very thing. And he dropped a bomb on me that Fishers and HSE High Schools are seeing a significant decline in student population to the point that they're getting ready to consider opening up the school district to kids that don't live in Fishers. Now, we would never do that, at least right now in Westfield, but because of how they planned housing, they've got some real gaps. Carmel does too. Carmel's been shutting down elementary schools because they're not getting kids into the school district until later age. So as we think about, you know, 2045, which is what we're planning for here, we have to be very thoughtful about housing, not only to meet today's needs, but also looking long-term, how can we keep Westfield sustainable and not seeing all of a sudden a situation where kids from Kokma are coming up to Westfield High School because we need bodies in our school. And that's a real, that's a real concern with this aging population, with interest rates being so low for so long. People aren't going to move now because you can't even get close to the same interest rates. People are aging and dying in place instead of the typical cycle of life. So we have to be thinking about that as we move forward.
And Cynthia, what's a cottage court? I don't know. What, what is that?
It's small, so it's a small group of houses that front onto a green and.
Is this out of Seattle? There, there's a development like that in Carmel and in Zionsville. They're really, it's by the Monon Community Center in Carmel. It's a gentleman, it's a designer. I've actually met him at something. Is that what we're talking about, where it's more walkable?
Yes, it's a walkable area. They're typically smaller houses, like under a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And they all front onto a green with kind of driveways and kind of garages that are outside loaded.
Very loud.
And I can, so I can bring you some pictures.
Okay.
More than happy to sit down and meet with any one of you outside, you know, this meeting and go over more of the statistics, demographics, things like that.
Yeah, but now that you brought that up, you're in the capacity building stage right now.
Mm-hmm.
And I know some people approached me that they got an invite to come and sit down and talk. How many people were invited to that stage and what were the demographics and how was that cross-section of people in our community selected?
Okay, I might have to look at Caleb. Yeah, are you talking about the steering committee? Because we have the steering committee, we have focus groups, so I'm not sure.
They didn't say specifically which one, but there was two people approached me and said they had received letters from the city to be on, invited to this process.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've got a steering committee created that's going to steer the entire process and then we put together focus groups as well. Steering committee was more of individuals that we thought brought a good background in housing and understanding of housing and commercial development, all things you're going to need to start driving this process. The focus groups were more targeted towards certain demographics. For example, we have one where we've invited a lot of the, the business community in to weigh in. We have one where we invited a lot of realtors. So, and we've got a list of all of them, if you guys want to take a look at it. I don't have it here at my fingertips, but there were several demographic groups that we created.
If you could provide that list to us, that'd be great.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion this evening? Thank you. I'm on that steering committee, so I'm really looking forward to, to these meetings. So, you asked me the wrong question.
Kurt, you were put on the list of do not call ever.
Actually, your phone number's been blocked. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Any, Caleb, do you have anything you'd like to add? I wanted to thank our planning department though for working hard on this. It's a joint partnership and we look forward to working tough, working hard on this as well as we move forward.
They have been.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move to old, old business now this evening. Ordinance 2464, which is the City of Westfield and Washington Township, Hamlin County in Indiana concerning the amendment to the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance for the Ambrose PUD District. This evening, we have Lauren Gillingham Teague with us.
For the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is the adoption consideration for the proposed Ambrose on Main PUD District located the northeast corner of 32 and Northeast Street, where there is a roundabout currently planned as part of the 32 redevelopment project. This petition proposes a four-story mixed-use residential building with commercial storefronts running on 32 and multifamily units on the side and above. Let's see, it should be exhibit in the ordinance. And you guys have seen this before a couple of times. I think, yeah, I think the approval letter will have it as well. Yes. Okay, moving on. So as with other multifamily PUDs, this development will be tied to the site plan, landscape plan, architectural elevations included in the PUD. There we go. And if approved, this development must be developed in substantial compliance with these exhibits. Since this was last before the council, the applicant has applied a modified site plan, adding parking lot perimeter landscaping to the north of the Penn Street extension. They've also provided additional parking data supporting the number and mix of residential units that they'll, they'll be providing within this building. I've outlined this with my staff report as well as some, some commercial parking standards. Janelle Fairman, our Economic Development Director, is here to provide some additional data related to the economic impact of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I've provided just a bit more information about the economic impact of this project. As you can see, the estimated investment of this project is about twenty-six point two million dollars. The existing assessed value on the property is under a million dollars, approximately two hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars per acre. And our future assessed value is about thirteen point one million dollars, coming out to an average of three point two million dollars an acre. So as you can see, investing in this property really helps bring in that level of income that we need from our downtown to support the city's services in that district. In addition, the school referendum will generate about thirty-six thousand dollars a year initially, and this will be, you know, year after year that's brought on even prior to the, the expiration of the tax increment district. Incentives provided on this project include a developer-backed bond, so this bond will be issued at no risk to the taxpayers. The developer will have that bond issued privately. The total value of the bond will be approximately four point one million dollars with three point three million dollars of net proceeds. In addition, the developer had secured all the property for this project, including what you see along the northern portion of the development, which will be part of Penn Street. So this is an extension that, that connects all the way to City Hall and will provide a lot of continuity for the downtown area. And that area is currently being designed by Kim Lee Horn in cooperation between the developer and Public Works.
The cost of Penn Street is on the city? Or the city's constructing it, but is the cost of that extension also the responsibility of the city?
That is a really great question. Shelby, maybe you can, city's paying for the design and construction of Penn Street Extension.
We would probably construct it as part of our project because of word of operation, that'll probably have to first alleviate potential conflict.
Shelby, thanks for the great answer. Can you just come up, just so people on YouTube and frankly, Kayla Arnold will text me here in about twenty seconds.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members of the council, mayor, and your staff. I was explaining that the city's responsible for the cost. We're going to work with the city to design it. They're responsible for the cost of the extension of Penn Street, but we will probably construct that in collaboration with the city since we're going to be out there developing the project. And I think that's probably the first thing we'll do to alleviate maybe potential traffic conflicts on the State Road 32 construction.
Do we have an estimate on the cost of that extension?
Not yet.
And so that's not a budgeted item for 2025 based on?
No, nope. But we, we have the money to be able to pay for it. And this was part, this is on our thoroughfare plan, so this is something the city always intended to do. The other thing we're going to do, which also has been budgeted, but by the time we get to it, I'm pretty sure will be into 2026 to some extent. That neighborhood, it runs like a U, like a U shape, that road, and I don't know when the last time the city repaved those roads. I rode on roads and I racked that were better than that neighborhood, and that's not saying a whole lot. So the plan is, is when this road is put in, we're going to repave the entire neighborhood because it's way long overdue.
Yeah, and I'll add that the, the true cause to be really less expensive in conjunction with what we're doing out there, we're going to be able to, to deliver it at a lower cost and we'll have some shared expenses, sidewalks, curbs, et cetera. So it'll really be at the lowest possible cost to the city based on the fact that we'll be contributing in a lot of ways.
Thank you.
I don't really see the need to re, to reword all of the mixed-use development stats on the project. I do want to couple, highlight a couple of items in particular. We are going to have some opportunity for some retail along State Road 32, which I think will help activate that streetscape and really create some great retail opportunities for people who want to shop in a downtown. And I think most notable on this development, it is entirely self-parked, but we also have an opportunity to, in the future, build a parking garage on this parking lot. I think that this is a really great opportunity for the city to be able to expand as necessary as growth occurs within the city. We of course would need to provide temporary parking for the existing businesses for that to happen through, you know, temporary parking lots, maybe on a, you know, a future piece of land that might be part of a development that hasn't quite started yet, similar to what we've done near Park Street. But I do think this is a really good opportunity for this developer to provide us this opportunity. But I do think this is a really good opportunity for this developer to provide us this opportunity for the future to, um, to supplement our parking demand, or parking, uh, capacity in the downtown. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Shelby's also here to answer any questions you might have.
Any, uh, questions or further discussion this evening? This is old business this evening, uh, so this is for our, our second and final, uh, vote. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash sixty-four.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Heron, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Any further discussion this evening? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, we're moving on to ordinance twenty-five dash oh, zero-one, which is the Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana, creating a new fund, two sixty-six. Our Deputy Mayor Danielle Carrie Toland is here this evening.
Yeah, good evening. For the record, Danielle Carrie Toland. Before you is the adoption consideration of Fund Number Two-Sixty-Six. This is a, um, capital project fund, so this is just to centralize and track our projects a little bit better. Um, three different funds will be going into this fund line item, which will be your general funds, um, food and beverage, and the Grand Park payments from G P S E. Um, prior to this meeting, last meeting, I think, um, Council President Tam had asked about community grants. Those are actually separate funds and have to be tracked separately because they are state-funded. Any other questions? I'm happy to answer.
I'm sorry, so Danielle, what three funds would actually go into this capital fund? You said?
So there will be general funds that we budgeted.
Okay.
During the budget cycle, so that will be, this is really small. I should increase my font. Here. Um, so we have about eighteen million dollars from the general funds that will be going into this. Six million dollars from the food and beverage tax and, um, approximately three millions from the G P S E payments. By the end of the year. That's what we have allocated, so for this cycle, it would be, for this budget season, would be twenty-seven million and some change.
Thank you.
Any further discussion this evening? This is a ordinance on its, uh, final consideration. We need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero-one.
Second.
And we have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, seconded by Councilor Dart. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to new business this evening, we have Resolution Twenty-five dash one oh-two, which is the Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana, expressing support and encouraging the Indiana General Assembly to allow and authorize the City of Westfield to establish a professional sports and convention development area. Uh, this evening, Mayor Willis will, uh, present this.
So currently, the way the law is written around, uh, P S D As, um, you're only allowed one P S D A per county. Don't ask me why, that's just the way it's written. Um, but I will tell you Marion County actually has two, and so that's kind of gone out the door. Um, we have qualified for a P S D A for quite some time, uh, since Indy Eleven has moved their headquarters or training center to Westfield. Uh, but past administration didn't pursue this legislation. Uh, myself and Mayor Jensen in Noblesville, we are, both our communities qualify and we're going after, um, a change to the statute that would allow, um, multiple P S D As within an existing county. Um, so we're lobbying for that right now. I don't know whether that will happen or not, uh, but we were informed that a good show of faith from our end is to pass a resolution showing city support of this move. Um, for those of you that are listening and are not familiar with the P S D A, it's basically a way for communities to capture new revenue generated from sales tax in a development district centered around a professional sport, um, organization. It is not a new tax, it's not a tax on residents whatsoever, it's a, the state giving up a portion of their sales tax and allowing communities to capture that so that we can reinvest that money into the district. So the vision around Grand Park is bold, um, it's not cheap, and this P S D A would go a long way in helping us finance and pull off some of the development requirements that we're going to have around utilities and infrastructure and those kinds of things. So that's why we're asking for a vote on this today. Or not a vote today, but it is a resolution, so it will be.
It is a resolution.
So we, we, assume we pass this, what's, what are the next steps for the city, I mean, and what's the timeline and?
Yeah.
What has to happen?
So we'll be forwarding this on to, um, Speaker Houston, who is taking the charge on the, on the House side, and then we'll wait and patiently wait to see if they react to it or not. Um, I have no idea yet where it stands, uh, but it will be voted on or not this session, this legislative session. It's a budget year, so these types of things have to be done during a, a budget cycle, which this one is, so.
Is, is there energy to move this forward in the state or, or where does it stand?
I, I believe so, um, but, you know, that is for the legislators to figure. I just certainly don't want to jinx this and I don't want to put narrative out there. I see we got TV here. Uh, I don't want to put narrative out there that Mayor Willis is saying we're going to get this, because, um, it's, it's definitely not a guarantee. But we're working hard. Um, myself and Mayor Jensen have been meeting with, uh, leaders from both the House and the Senate, uh, quite frankly, since summer of last year, to try to get this thing in front. I think if it gets in front of the legislators with, for a vote, I think we can get it done. It's just whether or not they're going to allow it to happen. Everything's getting tightened right now at the State House. Um, a lot of impacts, negative impacts, quite frankly, to municipalities. I just don't know if this is the year they're going to want to vote something that's going to release tax revenue from the state down to the local level.
Mayor, when you talk about sales tax, what is, what all is that defined as? Is it, is it specifically, is it sales tax related to sporting events, buying a TV?
Food, retail.
Everything, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's no limitations. This just has to be new. It can't be like, our district encompasses the restaurants on State Road Thirty-two. We're not capturing sales revenue from McDonald's. It's already there. Uh, this has to be a spur of new development and a new tax revenue source for the state.
So no impact to any residential, commercial project, products or pro- properties or anything like that? Only unless they create a business that has sales tax that basically the, the person's paying.
You are correct.
It's, it's done on a retail transaction and defined by a geographical district. Um, I, I think the House leadership right now would like to see that on, on new, uh, new projects that may come in. Uh, but it's a rate of growth, so the state rightfully or wrongly views the sales taxes, state sales tax, or the state tax, that they view that as their revenue. This allows us to capture some of that sales tax with the investments particularly that we make within Grand Park. Uh, this is pretty unusual. At the same time, um, the, the House and both the Senate, uh, particularly now are liking, are preferring, uh, locals to show local support for these types of measures, uh, in a resolution, much like we have in front of us, uh, today, this evening. Mayor, do you have any other comments on this?
I do not.
So this is a resolution this evening, which is eligible for adoption. We need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-five one oh-two.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, seconded by Councilor Huff. Any further discussion? I see none, may we call the roll?
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, next order of business is Resolution Twenty-five one oh-three, which is the Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana, approving and adopting an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Westfield and the Westfield, Washington Township Library and the Trustee Owners Association. I think this evening, Mr. McConnell is here.
Thank you, President, Mayor, Council. For the record, Chris McConnell, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. Um, as you stated, there is an interlocal in front of you for consideration this evening for the city to take over and provide landscape services for the new library and township building. Those services through one of our contractors would include mowing, bed care, uh, irrigation care, those types of items. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer. Mayor is also here to answer, and there are representatives from the township and the library that can answer as well.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion this evening?
Yeah, so what drove, what drove this, um, um, collaboration, if you will? What was the deciding factor to drive this? Uh, my assumption is, is that when the library was built, there was likely a, a budget set aside for landscaping and all those type, all that type of work?
Yeah, it was. Um, there's several things that drove it. First off, I meet with the township trustee and, and, um, uh, Director Shale Solars on a monthly basis, and we constantly looking for ways to streamline and collaborate. Uh, the, really, the driver behind this was economy of force. Um, you know, we have contracts already in place to do these kinds of things. Adding them to our, um, to our service just made a lot of sense. The second piece is the schools used to take care of this for the library, and then when the library moved locations, obviously that fell apart. Like, when we talk about T I F and we talk about T I F a lot, um, one of the negatives to a T I F is the people that usually get hurt the most is the township and the library. And I feel this is a great way of a give-and-take process of, of times we have to do T I F. It makes sense for the taxpayer and for the city as a whole. But when we can find opportunities to be partners in things like this, I just think it's, it's a good business and it's good partnership, so.
In regards to that, uh, I didn't see that communicated anywhere. What is, what is that annual cost roughly, Chris?
Uh, it's right at twenty-two thousand dollars a year.
Good, thanks. And that's a savings from, if they were to contract it on their own, I'm assum- I'm assuming?
I, I could not answer that question, because, um, as Mayor stated, this, uh, obviously is a new building and the schools had been providing the, the maintenance up until the point where they moved. So it's a little hard to determine that.
Yep.
Uh, it, both are great community assets and frankly, marquee, uh, facilities, uh, for the community, particularly where they're located as well. So it's a continued cooperation, partnership, even on parking details is, is, as much as that, so, which we appreciate.
Yeah, I failed to mention that, um, you know, Shale knows that if I mow her yard, I bet, we better be able to use their parking, uh, after-hours for Park Street Restaurants. So, again, we're all working together and being collaborative in how we, uh, how we work together, so.
So this is a resolution this evening. Um, it is eligible for adoption. We need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to prove Resolution Twenty-five one oh-three.
Second.
A motion made by Councilor Dart, uh, excuse me, Councilor Wanniger, seconded by Councilor Dart. That's two tonight, by the way. Um, any further discussion? I see none, may we call the roll?
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next, uh, items on our business are first readings, uh, as we start moving through, and they're ordinances. So these are first readings, uh, no official action needs to be taken on, on the next few items. But ordinance twenty-five oh-two, which is the Lantern Commons P U D amendment, uh, Ms. Gillingham Teague.
Thank you. Yes, the item before you tonight is the introduction for an amendment to the Lantern Commons P U D district, uh, specific to Area D. Uh, this is the, the piece located, uh, the northeast, so generally located at the northeast corner of Thirty-one and One Hundred and Sixty-first Street. And this specific piece is the one most to the southwest. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm bad at directions occasionally. So yes, directly flush to Thirty-one and One Hundred and Sixty-first Street. Um, this amendment, um, this would be for a proposed five-story hotel and the associated restaurant, as shown on this concept plan. Uh, this amendment proposes to modify the applicable sign standards, accessory building location standards, and to waive the Thirty-two overlay architectural requirements in favor of, um, the building being developed in substantial compliance with the provided elevations, um, concept plan and signage plan. Um, this item will be in front of the Planning Commission for a public hearing at their February third meeting. Uh, Matt Skelton with Church Churchill and Antrim is here to give a short presentation or answer any questions, whatever he wants to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
For the record, Matt Skelton with Church Churchill and Antrim, Antrim with offices at one sixteen North Union Street. Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we're, uh, happy to be in front of you this evening, uh, on behalf of Andmore Partners and Cardium Hotel One L L C, uh, the owner of the real estate, um, to present to you, uh, this proposal that would accommodate the development of a, a Lotte L seven, uh, hotel on the property. This is approximately a fifty million dollar, uh, in, uh, plus investment, uh, ho- full-service hotel, uh, and, uh, restaurant facility on the property. Um, as you, many of you may know, Lantern Commons, uh, P U D was originally adopted in, uh, April of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the site that is the, the, um, subject of this petition has been contemplated as a hotel, uh, really since the inception of that project. Uh, the purpose of the P U D amendment is, uh, Lauren highlighted, the main purpose, it has to do with, um, some of the architectural requirements that are contained in the original, uh, Lantern Commons P U D. Um, the popular school of thought, um, and it may still exist, but the popular school of thought at the time, uh, was that by defaulting to the State Highway Thirty-two overlay zone, uh, architectural standards, it sets a pretty high bar for architectural standards. Um, and when you're planning a, a mixed-use development of this scale, uh, it's hard to know exactly what, uh, individual developments may require, uh, to accommodate their development. Uh, and so now that an end user has been selected for this particular site, uh, we've come through to try to address the items that have given us, uh, trouble and the, the, to just eliminate any guesswork, essentially they're, uh, agreeing to, uh, commit to the renderings and the elevations and the building materials that are before you included in your packets. Uh, we have received some initial architectural comments from, uh, Planning Department and the Economic Development folks, uh, and the client has had an opportunity to review those and believes that they should be able to address those adequately through some minor, uh, design changes. Uh, and then we're also aware, of course, that, uh, parking has been underscored as an important consideration for this property. And I, I can assure you that my, my client is probably more interested in making sure that the site is adequately parked than, than anybody else. So, uh, that is something that they're, um, conducting further analysis on. We actually have a, a, uh, meeting scheduled later this week with the planning staff to try to button up these, uh, last remaining issues, just to make sure there's nothing we need to address as we're going through this process. Uh, but in, in closing, I'd just offer that the, uh, construction, uh, if approved, of course, uh, is planned to begin as early as this fall. It's expected that this project, uh, the entire property, it would take probably about twelve to eighteen months, uh, to develop this site or to complete this project. Uh, if you have any, uh, questions, we're happy to re, uh, respond to those and, um, thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Skelton. Any questions for Matt this evening? So I know it's an introduction, but just for a couple of things, just to kind of get him on the record as you work with the A P C, the brick's highly complimentary to S E P, particularly with being a five-story building, uh, which I appreciate. Matt, could you elaborate, though, just on, on the brand that's coming here and just kind of give the public some information on the uniqueness of this project?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what I know, yeah, so, um, and, and I'll, I'll be smarter by the time I get back. But the, the, uh, this is, for, for those of you who are not, uh, familiar with the, the Lotte, uh, uh, brand, it, it is the most, um, the largest hotel group in Korea, and I think, Mayor, you're going to have the opportunity to meet, meet the folks, uh, in the near future as well. Uh, but the, uh, this is a somewhat unique facility, especially to Westfield. I mean, it's a, aside from being a full-service, there will be, uh, restaurant facilities within the hotel lounge, uh, meeting spaces, uh, and then a separate, uh, restaurant venue on the site, certainly open to anyone, intended, of course, to provide, uh, fine, uh, opportunities for, for, um, visitors to, to visit there as well. Um, but, uh, this features some, some balcony opportunities on, uh, upper floors, which aren't, aren't common, uh, to a lot of hotels. It really is a, on the higher end of things that one might expect in the way of a hotel development. Is there, is there more that you'd like to?
No, I just wanted to say a couple of key things. I, I think it's important, but you, we talked about the screening. There's a, uh, kind of trash, it's, it's hard to deal with, but I know you've taken some special consideration on that.
Yes.
Um, the other piece of the parking, which I know Victor will, will keep, keep you, keep us updated on the A P C. The other piece of the parking, which I know Victor will keep, keep you, keep us updated on the APC process, but the parking, how that interplays with the other parts of the development on 161st and Springmont Lantern Commons, how that interacts, particularly, it looks like there's at least a roundabout, if you will, considered probably valet parking for the freestanding restaurant, or am I mistaken if you look at the site plan?
And I'm probably not as versed yet in, in those nuances. Those are things that I would typically, you know, we'd, we'd be spending time on in a detailed development plan.
Sure.
But I can, I can, I can, I can learn and, and report back.
Great.
But no, the, but yeah, there, because of the, the multiple uses, it is expected that many of the visitors of the hotel would be also enjoying those facilities on the grounds as well. So there, there will be some, some crossover in parking, if you will. Would this be the first project for this brand in Indiana? I, it may be in Indiana. I think they're in Chicago, New York, Seattle, and it may be the first one in Indiana.
It is in Indiana. Any other questions for Mr. Skelton this evening? Matt, we look forward to you working through the APC process.
Thank you.
See you soon. Thank you. The next item of business this evening is Ordinance 25-03, which is the meaning provisions in the Westfield, Washington Township Unified Development Ordinance and Processes for Incentivized PUDs. This evening, we have Lauren Gillingham Teague as well.
Thank you. This is my last one. I promise.
You're doing a great job, maybe better than others, but I'll, we'll talk about that later.
Thank you, thank you. So the item before you tonight is an amendment to the UDO to clarify the types of submittals required for city incentivized PUDs, as well as PUDs that fall within the city's economic development overlay district. Essentially, the economic development overlay district is a complicated way to say any project that falls within an EDA or an established TIF area. We have to kind of route it through the overlay district because of the standards applied. So can you open the ordinance? Is it not on here? Thank you. So this is a pretty simple amendment. Essentially, it creates two tiers. You have your project that is within an economic development overlay. If it falls within that TIF district, it is required to have a letter of support from economic development before it will be accepted by the Community Development Department as a PUD filing for incentivized projects, so projects within a PUD, or excuse me, projects within a TIF district, economic development area that are also requesting incentives shall submit that letter of support from economic development as well as a dimensioned site plan, full building elevations and renderings of all proposed structures. This just kind of fills in some gaps that, that were becoming apparent between some of our processes, community development and economic development and making sure we're all aligned and everything's ready to come before you guys. This item will be in front of the Plan Commission for a public hearing at their February 3 meeting. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Any questions this evening? I do personally want to thank both Director Todd and Director Fairman for working collaboratively, as they always do, but trying to also formalize this process from some folks doing, trying to do some things outside of this. And they will also help the council, but more importantly, will also help taxpayers in the city as well. Thank you. The next item of business is 25-04, excuse me, 25-05, which is the, wait a second, it's 25-04. 25-04, which is the Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana authorizing and approving additional appropriation from the operating balance of the general fund. Mayor Deputy Mayor Danielle Carey-Tolan.
Good evening again. I will be before you for the next four, so we will have fun. Before you is just a public hearing and not for adoption consideration tonight, but it's an additional appropriation for $22,015. And this is to go back to what you guys passed earlier of the interlocal to cover the financial responsibility for the maintenance contract for the interlocal agreement with the township and the library.
Any questions this evening?
And I'll add, I think they were all advertised separately, so I would do a public hearing for each one.
Okay, thank you. So we need to open up our public hearing this evening, which will be at 8:15 this evening. Our public hearing for Ordinance 25-04. I always like staring at everybody. We'll go ahead and close our public hearing at 8:15 as well, with no one stepping forward with regards to Ordinance 25-04. This is a first reading this evening. We can consider this at the next council meeting. Our next item up for business is 25, Ordinance 25-05, which is the Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana authorizing and approving additional appropriations of funds from the Sports Campus Operating Fund. Danielle is presenting yet again.
Yes. Again, this is an additional appropriation for $3,254,261. And this is a collaborative of a lot of different items. Some of it is invoices to be, that we got in January to be, that were paid for December. Others were escrow items, other were LSG invoices that we've gotten, so I can go over it. I think we've had multiple emails going back and forth of these items, but happy to answer anything tonight.
Any questions this evening? Councilor Dart.
I've got just a couple. So all of these were for services in 2024, correct? But may have been, well.
Not all of them, but some of them are, majority of them, yes.
Okay, but the bottom line is, we shouldn't see any more invoices for 2024. We should be cleaned up on 2024.
Correct.
Okay.
We shouldn't.
All right.
But I'm not promising. There are always exceptions. For instance, a legal bill that we hadn't accounted for yet.
Well, okay, so maybe that's a better, maybe a better question to ask is how do we ensure, never, it's never going to be perfect.
Right.
Right? But there is a deadline, I think, of December 17th or 18th where invoices need to be submitted. How do we, how do we minimize this in the future? Because this is a pretty extensive list.
Right.
How do, how do we minimize that? What's, what process can we, and I'm not asking you to answer that tonight.
And I also think this one's, was kind of unique with getting, not knowing for sure if we needed to do a whole budget for Grand Park, not knowing if, you know, the GPSE contract was going to be passed. So we didn't even have a budget. There were a lot of things in play on this one, so.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the second half of my question would be, what, and I don't know the answer to this, what is, what is the city, well, for lack of a better term, on the hook for in 2025 as it relates to Grand Park? What line items does the city still have to be responsible for? And are, are we budgeted for that or will be, will we be asked to appropriate more dollars in 2020, this year sometime?
Right. That's, we have made best assumptions. I've worked with Matt Trinion on this time and time again, and Matt Deck, to going over these line items to make sure that we've captured everything as best to our ability. I'm hoping again that we don't have to come before you, but I can't promise.
Yeah, but I'm saying this, this cleans up, for the most part, 2024. But is the city, yeah, is the city on the hook for HVAC expenses or are they on the hook?
That is included in here. I know that we're doing an HVAC repair right now that was contracted, that's $122,000.
Right.
That was on here and that's kind of cleans that up. I mean, like again, I've, I've worked with.
And keep in mind that contractually, there'll be expenses that are incurred each year at Grand Park. For example, Colts Camp, we're staffing Colts Camp from the Grand Park staff. And that was laid out in the contract and hourly, hourly rate and all of that. So there are operations at Grand Park that our old employees, now GPSE employees, will be handling in the short term that they'll be invoicing us for. So this is not it. But it, until we go through that exercise for the first time, it's a little hard to predict what that cost will be. But keep in mind, we only have three years left on Colts Camp in Westfield. And the vision has always been, we're going to limp through that contract using the exact staff we have in place right now that's already been trained, and we'll just compensate GPSE for their hourly rate of those employees. But if we extend that contract down the road, there are some long-term solutions that will need to be had. But right now, because of the short-termness of that remaining contract, that's how we're behaving.
Barring some unforeseen repair expenses or special events like you just stayed with Colts Camp, there isn't any 2025 operational expense, right?
No.
In, in this figure too, you also have our payment into the capital expense piece. So that's $2 million of the anticipated 3.2.
Correct.
In this list of appropriations, there are a lot of round numbers. I can't imagine all these invoices coming in rounded up to those numbers. I assume they're, are these the exact numbers of the invoices that'll be coming in?
No, again, when we did it, right, back before getting some of the invoices from our, we were doing assumptions and going back to previous bills from the previous last year, this time, what electricity was. So again.
So any remaining funds that would be left over, where would those go? And if other invoices came in, would those remaining funds be used to pay for those? Or will those be additional appropriations on top of that?
Any funds left over will revert back to the reserves of that fund line item. If there are additional things that we haven't laid out, we'll make sure that we, again, I think this is pretty much a zero base from what I'm seeing. I think we're going to have to do some inner fund transfers to clean up just some negative line items. But I think we're, we're pretty much there.
Thanks.
On the HVAC, that 122,000, was that a repair or a new, new piece of HVAC?
That was part repair and part new motor, from my understanding.
If we could just make those, like, the list that I saw, it just said repair. Just moving forward, it'd be nice to know, like, hey, that's not a repair, that's a new unit.
Okay.
So this is the first reading. We do have to open up for a public hearing this evening. So there's no other questions at this moment. We're going to open up the public hearing at 8:22 PM for our public hearing here. Seeing no one step forward, we're going to close our public hearing at 8:23 PM, based on the clock, for this ordinance. So we'll move forward. No other questions or comments this evening. We'll move forward to Ordinance 25-06, which is Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana authorizing and approving additional appropriation from the operating balance of the general fund. This one will be presented as well by Danielle Carey-Tolan.
Yes. This is an additional appropriation for $37,000. This is for adoption consideration tonight, so you will have a public hearing and then adopt it tonight as well. These funds are specifically to support economic development, to go to Korea. This is to strengthen our relationship and explore potential investments with the City of Westfield and opportunities in Korea. As you just heard, we have a wonderful hotel coming from Korea and it's going to support the business of Samsung coming to the north of us. So it's just really fostering meaningful relationships as our delegation team heads over there and to increase our activity amongst different, again, businesses. We're, we're hoping that maybe in the future it might become a sister city, but we never know. Any questions?
Mayor, do you want to talk a little bit about our strategy here?
Yeah, so, and I think Matt left, but he hinted on it. So the, we have a Korean contingency coming into Westfield in the very near future to discuss the L7 hotel. Also being told they want to talk about another development opportunity in the city. I don't know what that means. But when I took office, I was looking at what parts of the world could we court and try to get Westfield on their map for potential economic development opportunities. Mayor Cook's strategy was Japan. And I know the governor, Mayor Cook, and other delegations from central Indiana had made some trips to Japan. I would have liked to have stayed on that same path, but when you burn a bridge with Toyota, like we did with Bastion, it kind of closed the door. And we were getting signals that right now it's too soon, too early, so we need to look at other opportunities. With the billions and billions of dollars of investments being made right now by Samsung in Korea, or in Kokomo, might as well be Korea, it's so far away. But we have been getting, starting to get some peens from Korean companies or companies that support the battery manufacturing industry, and they're looking at Westfield. And so we felt this was a good starting point, was to go over there and start to harvest relationships with leaders in, in South Korea. No, not North Korea, we're going to South Korea, a big difference. And we were told, set your expectations realistic, and we're not going to go in day one and they're just going to open up the coffers of opportunities for us. But if you understand Korean culture, it's a relationship that takes time. And we felt coming to them, showing our interest in their country and meeting with local IEDC-type personnel, local businesses, we're going to do a tour of their school district. We think that it could lead to some real opportunities here in Westfield.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mayor, for Danielle this evening?
Can you explain maybe a little bit of like who's going, city employees, how long you're going to be there?
Yeah. It's a very short trip, or I think we're on the ground for four days. And that includes day one of us arriving from about a 20-hour flight. So it's going to be a short trip, it's going to be exhausted, exhausting trip. But we felt, you know, we need to be there for a certain amount of days to hit everything we needed to hit. Right now, that we're planning, myself, Janelle Fairman, Director of Economic Development, Kayla Arnold, our Director of Communications, we're going to take Brian Toma-Michael, who's on our RDC. Also, he obviously has ties to the schools and we're being told, and we're seeing that right now. The L is a great example, the L7, Koreans value education. And that's why Westfield is on their radar screen right now because of quality of our schools. So we're going to do over and do some networking with their school districts as well. And then we're taking with us, and we have to pay for that, but we're bringing two ambassadors from, from the State House who focus on Korean culture and includes interpreter in that group that's going to follow us and make sure that we're not doing anything stupid in the eyes of the Koreans, you know, like a protocol officer that will be joining us. So it's, it's a very small group and we're going to, we're going to get in and get out as quickly as we can.
Does this 37,000 include the two individuals from the State House?
It's all in. Yeah, it's all in. Includes flights, hotel, we were planning a dinner, a couple of dinners with government officials and executives from, from L7, or Lotte? Lotte? Lotte. I wish it was Lotte.
This is why you need somebody from.
That's why I need interpreter, guys, you do not want me over there representing Westfield. But no, it's, it's an all-in cost for, for the down and back trip.
Yeah, Indiana Economic Development Corporation have staff that's assigned to certain countries and cultures and so forth. So that, that's really who's going. It's true professionals on that economic development side.
Yes, I was going to add, since it's the first read, you would have to suspend the rules first, then vote.
When, when is this trip scheduled to occur?
Scheduled for March. It's right around the corner.
So first, though, we do need to have a public hearing, though, correct? So we're going to open up the public hearing at 8:29. Seeing no one step forward, we're going to close the public hearing at 8:29 as well. So there's a question that was just made by Caitlin to suspend the rules for potential consideration of voting this evening. To do so, we need a unanimous vote to suspend the rules. We need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance 25-06?
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, second by Councilor Heron. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart. Motion carries to suspend the rules.
Now, we have, we have a suspension of rules. Now, we have a suspension of rules. This is now eligible for consideration this evening, so we need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25-06.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Heron, seconded by Councilor Dart. Any discussion on the potential final passage? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Dupner?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
We have ordinance, next order of business, ordinance 2509, Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana authorizing and approving additional appropriations of funds from the Mayor's Grand Gala Fund. This is also presented this evening by Danielle Carey-Tolan.
Yes, before you is just a first reading and public hearing for having funds for additional appropriation for the Mayor's Grand Gala of $499,961. Once this potentially can be approved at your next meeting, these funds are aligned to go to Advancing Westfield Foundation. This will be their, able to pay out the grants, because those need to be paid out of the Advancing Westfield Foundation, and then start planning for their Grand Gala for this year. Any questions? I'm happy to...
Thank you, Councilor Dart.
Yeah, we've had a few discussions amongst the councilors, so it was agreed upon with the mayor that the initial request for funds to kick off the gala would be paid back. I believe that's $160,000, and it would be paid back over the next three years. So we're all in alignment with that, but that does need to be put into the grant agreement, which we haven't seen the grant agreement, so...
We just finalized, sorry to interrupt you, we just finalized that today, Caitlin and I, actually, probably 30 minutes before council.
Oh, okay, so...
And those will be going to signature for the Advancing Westfield President and Mayor.
Okay, so with that in mind, does the grant agreement need to be approved by the council?
That will be part of claims.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so what we would want to do in the next meeting is approve the ordinance...
Put claims at the bottom.
And put the claims at the back of the agenda, if you will. That makes sense?
Yep.
And then obviously agree on the terms of the grant agreement. We should be good then.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to get that up.
So for those in the public, though, can you talk a little bit about what Advancing Westfield Foundation is?
Mayor, do you want to take that? You want me to take it?
So when I was elected, I wanted to create a community foundation to support the various non-for-profits in our community to do amazing things. We are the only city in Hamilton County that actually does not donate money from the city's budget to the non-for-profit community. And we're going to continue to push this to the private sector through the fundraising that I do in the Grand Gala. But the monies, proceeds that we collect from that event will be transferred to the foundation, where they will be able to use that money to make positive impacts in our community, so...
So some of those programs are Youth Assistance Program, for example, and other entities at AWF, if you will, for, if we're going to all have fun with acronyms today, will choose to support as well.
Yeah. Each year, they'll have a grant cycle, and they're looking at one major one that will be more dollars, and then later in the year, having smaller grants for some of the other non-for-profits at maybe just $1,000 or $5,000. From the Advancing Westfield and the Gala, most of the grants will be at $25,000 to $50,000 grants.
And just so residents understand what this contract we're talking about, the council ceded funds to the city for the gala, because we didn't have any money. I mean, the foundation didn't exist prior to me taking office. We had no way to fund the foundation to be able to put down payments on event space and things like that. So they ceded $250,000, I believe.
$160,000.
$160,000, sorry.
It was actually stated, I'm sorry to interrupt you, in a meeting, that it was actually $280,000, but you only had expenses of $229,000, so...
Whatever that number is. There's a number out there.
Figure that out.
We'll figure it out between now and the next meeting.
The city has committed that we will repay that back before the end of my first term, so we have no other agreement beyond that. I don't know when we'll pay it back, sooner rather than later, but it makes no sense to pay that back and turn around and have to ask for more money next year to pay for expenses upfront that we have to pay. So we're going to let it play out at least one more year, and if we have another year like we did this year, I see us paying that back sooner rather than later.
Thank you. We need to have a public hearing this evening as well on this matter, so I'm going to open up the public hearing at 8:35 PM.
I feel like we should have some music or something. Yeah, thank you, Kurt.
We're going to close the public hearing for ordinance 2509 at 8:36 this evening. Thank you, Danielle, for bringing this in front of us. This will be eligible for future consideration as well. Moving to the city council comments. Victor, do you have an APC update for us?
Yeah, I'll have two, since we had, out of the norm, two meetings since the last council meeting. For APC update from January 14th, we elected Mike Neal as the new APC president and Billy Bunkafist as the new vice president for the year. Consent agenda, we have veto of Westfield, which this body approved last year. Items of business was Ambrose on Main, which we approved this evening. The public hearing item was Grand Millennium PUD, which was also presented at the last meeting. And then on 1/21 last week at our workshop meeting, we had a discussion regarding Grand Universe PUD and Finley Creek Estates. So that is all we have done.
Finance committee update from Councilor Wanniger.
The finance committee meeting today was canceled. It was postponed, so look to have that here in February, so...
Thank you. Any other comments from the council this evening? Seeing none, Mayor?
I have nothing.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.